Just do a quick check. Alder Neal, can you hear us in the council chamber?
Yes.
Thank you. We can hear you too. Thanks. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us this evening. I will call the Capitol Improvements and Street Maintenance Committee for the City of Wausau to order. Today is Thursday, January 14, 2021, and a quorum of members is present with three members attending in person and two attending by WebEx. With two members on WebEx, we'll take our votes by roll call tonight. The first item on our agenda tonight is our consent agenda, made up of items, Item A, approval of minutes of the December 10, 2020 meeting. Item B is action on temporary easement with Bruce Puchkowski at 1202 and 1204 North Third Street, and Item C, which is action on stormwater maintenance agreement for Nitis Holding Company LLC at 201 North 17th Avenue. Does anyone want to handle any of those items separately that need discussion? If not, we'll keep them all on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Motion by Larson, is there a second? Second by Wadinski. We'll go ahead and vote on that item. Oh. Deb, go ahead. Did you have a comment? Okay, she's good. All right. We'll go ahead and vote then. Wadinski?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan? Oh, she's muted. Can we unmute Deb?
Aye.
Okay, Deb votes aye, and I'll vote aye as well. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Item number two is a public hearing, discussion and possible action on vacating and discontinuing Hilltop Road north of Forest Valley Road to the termini. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public that are in attendance tonight to speak to this item? Okay, you can come up one at a time, state your name and address for the record, and we'll accept your comment. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Corey Pierce. I am the property owner north of that piece of property with the easement on my property, so just wanted to make myself available for questions.
Okay.
I'm Patty Sawinski, and I live on 4530 Forest Valley Road, and that would be a budding on the easement as well, so.
Okay. Do you have thoughts on the matter, as far as whether you are opposed or supporting the item?
You know, I don't think it's a concern as far as whatever the city has decided to do. Our only concern is what about the water flow coming down from Forest Valley? I don't know as far as what's being proposed. I guess I'd like to know a little bit more about that, if there's going to be a possible driveway put through there. I know that when the city originally came up Forest Valley Road and they did the black topping and came down, I know that, and I forget the gentleman's name, so many years ago, they were kind enough to realize that there could be an issue with the water coming down Forest Valley and possibly going into our backyard. So the city actually, beyond our property line, with the black top, they actually put a lip so that the water would go into the easement. So that is, I think, our concern as far as the water coming down.
Okay.
Glenn Sawinski, 4530 Forest Valley Road also. The concern that I would have is that make sure that the water table in the back has not affected our land in any way. The land in the back is a, is a wetland, and we just don't want to be flooded out with whatever they're doing on that, on that easement.
I guess we'd just like to know more of what the process was or what the plans were first.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have additional public comment for this item while the public hearing is open? Anyone else that wishes to make public comment, come on up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record? We'll ask one more time while the public hearing is open. Is anyone else here for public comment on the item, discussion and possible action on vacating and discontinuing Hilltop Road north of Forest Valley Road to its termini? Seeing no additional public comment, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and the committee will then commence discussion with staff. Oh, Lou, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question is, is, I mean, it's, it's pretty clear there's nothing there, but what's the purpose in vacating this? Is this just so we're not responsible for it, or maybe Eric can explain more?
We'll have, we'll bring Alan up. He's got the narrative here. Go ahead, Alan.
The request from this vacation came from the owner of the parcel 4602. It, I guess when this was proposed previously, when it was platted, it was platted with a right-of-way in there with the thought that maybe the city would extend a road to the north and get to that development. But given that it's all wetlands, and it's the town of Wausau to the north, I don't think we have any plans or any, you know, use to extend that. So I think when, in talks with the, and owner, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, that, you know, he wants to utilize that land for a possible driveway or something. So, so with that being right-of-way, if he wanted to put a driveway, and there's something, he would have to get an easement across the right-of-way to put a driveway in. So it just clears that hurdle, since the city does not have, I mean, I'm talking with Eric and, and talking among staff, we don't have any desire to put a road in there. So it would just vacate our right-of-way and our rights in that, and it would go back, it would revert back to that owner.
And so this essentially, I mean, this land, maybe when this was all subdivided, was put on the official map, and this would undo that process? Is that?
Correct. For the, that parcel, that 4602, when that was platted, they gave all the land for that right-of-way.
Okay.
And, so that, that would revert back to that, to that parcel.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have questions for staff on this particular item? I mean, this really just relieves the city of, you know, its, its access right for this piece of land, and then allows the private sector to utilize it? Any other questions or comment? Do we have a motion then to approve the vacation? Motion by Larson, is there a second? Second by Wadinski? Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Ryan? Oh, she's muted. It takes a second. Oh. Oh, I think I can see that she said aye, so we'll record Deb's vote as aye. Neal?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Wadinski?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well, and that item is then approved. Item number three is discussion and possible action on temporary or permanent parking restrictions on the 300 block of Third Street for the valet parking program. You'll recall, a couple times now during the pandemic, we've extended the temporary allowance for a couple parking stalls to be dedicated to valet parking in front of those restaurants. And every so often, it comes time to either renew that or make it permanent, so we've reached that time again. The last time we considered it, this actually expired on January 9, so we need to make a decision as to whether or not we want to extend it another six months, and, or go ahead and make that, that parking arrangement permanent.
I move to approve.
Okay. Permanent or another six months, Tom?
Well, six months is fine, and if it comes around again in six months, I imagine I'll, I'll go ahead and vote for it again.
Okay. The staff recommendation is to give it another six months and then consider a permanent arrangement come spring? I think we'll be a little further down the road with the pandemic then, too.
Yep.
Okay, so six months is your motion?
Sure.
Okay, is there a second for Tom's motion? Second by Larson. Further discussion or questions?
I just want to say, if I could, Madam Chair?
Sure, go ahead.
The reports we had after we first instituted this were very positive in terms of, you know, directing some of the parking to the parking ramp, you know, relieving some of that concern about just not being able to park, you know. And it just, it's worked out, a variety of measures, so I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, it has been well received, and it seems to be working okay. With a motion and a second on the floor, then to renew this arrangement for another six months, we'll go ahead and vote then. Larson?
Aye.
Wadinski?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Ryan? Oh, Deb's muted. There she goes. I think she's okay. Okay, we don't have her audio. It says she's unmuted, but we don't have Deb's audio. But I can see that Deb said aye. Okay. And then I'll vote aye as well, and that item is then approved. Item number four is discussion and possible action on naming a segment of roadway south of Single Avenue. We had deferred this at our December 10 meeting, asking staff to come back with a couple other options. We weren't real interested in, you know, naming it after an individual in our last meeting, and so we asked for some other options. And upon doing some historical research, you'll see that they went back to 1892 for the original plat dedication to figure out, you know, who owned it first and, and what the history was. With that, apparently, the original owner of the plat was the Chicago Excelsior Company back to 1892, and one of the options that were offered is to name it Excelsior Drive. Apparently, we don't, and this is really to clarify things, so we don't have a lot of duplications and things either. The other option is to name it Trostal Way, after the president of the Excelsior Company, this gentleman signed the original plat. And I think historically, some of the discussion we had with the gentleman who attended last month also, is that when we name public spaces after individual people, we look to see what larger contribution that they've made to the community, you know, whether it's through philanthropy or whether it's through, you know, some historical significance. And, but we do have these two options. What do you guys think about these two? Or do you have a preference for one over the other?
I'm okay with either one.
Okay. What are your thoughts? Go ahead, Jim.
I like Excelsior.
I feel like I do, too. I think it's less individualized, but it does reflect some of the history.
I would move to approve that.
Okay. We have a motion to approve Excelsior Drive. Is there a second?
I would second.
Second by Neal? Further discussion or questions? Go ahead, Jim.
Side note, the gentleman that was here in the last meeting, he sold Harley-Davidson's for many years before he sold his business, and now Excelsior was a competitor of Harley-Davidson, so it's kind of ironic.
It is ironic.
Even though this business did not have anything to do with that business.
Unrelated, but ironic. Additional comment or questions? If not, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion then. Wadinski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Ryan? Oh, she muted herself. Okay.
Aye.
There she is. Deb was an aye, and I'll vote aye as well, and that item then passes unanimously. Item number five, discussion and possible action on parking restrictions in the 500 block of Franklin Street. This item comes to us, actually from Alder Killian, he's with us this evening. He's been contacted by some residents who are asking for us to consider a two-hour parking restriction in the 500 block of Franklin Street because the block immediately west of that has it. And you've got some maps in your meeting packets and a copy of the petition that was received that looks like it was signed by almost every home on that block. Alan, did you want to talk about this one? I see you have the write-up in the packet.
Yes. I think when it would, like, the petition came in, so we reviewed it, and my staff recommendation is to not approve it based, not based on, when, when the two-hour parking regulations went in downtown, if you remember, the, there was two-hour parking on the other side of Sixth, there was parking on several different blocks between Fifth and Sixth, and it was kind of a hodgepodge. So when it came back as a downtown parking, it came as a square, basically, you know, with this, bounded by First Street, Fifth Street, Washington Street, and Mackinac Street. That was to simplify, because it was kind of all over the place. So now you have a square that is, or a rectangle, excuse me, with a, with a two-hour parking. It made it easier to enforce, and it made it easier to explain to people. My, I guess my concern with this is if that we put this one block in, that it's going to spur other blocks to come in, and then you're on the other side of Sixth, and then you're kind of a hodgepodge again. So I think that's my concern with it. Now, I have been, just in the last several weeks, and this isn't an indication of the whole year, but I, I, you can see the picture in here, there's nobody parking there, and on the, on the overall map, you can see when that picture was taken. And then when I went out there to take a picture, there was no one parked there. And I've visited the site eight times in the last two weeks, and I've never seen anyone parked on that block. I'm sure I'm going to be disputed by, you know, because I'm only in a short snap, snap of time when I'm looking there, but I don't see a parking issue. There are parking, no parking from here to corner marked on each end to prevent people to, from pulling up too close to Fifth and Sixth, so that's good. I also wanted to, I did receive a call, just to read it into the record, from Krista Salis from 511 Franklin Street. She's neutral on the topic. She wants to go along with her neighbors, but she doesn't see a, an issue with it. She just wanted to be read into the record as that, and that, she just wants to make sure that we maintain the no parking from here to corner signs, because she thinks that's, that's a bigger issue than people parking on the streets. She was at 511 Franklin. So I just told her that I would read that into the record.
How wide, how wide is the right-of-way there?
The right-of-way is, it should be your normal 60 feet.
So if there's cars parked there, I mean, assuming that, and at night, they would have to follow even on, but assuming there's cars parked there during the business day, have we had any difficulty with traffic getting through there, or a snow removal on that street at all?
I didn't, I don't believe so. DPW hasn't complained about it.
I haven't heard any issues on that, on Franklin Street specifically.
The other situation that I guess was outlined in the petition, and when I see the narrative in the petition, the residents point out that, you know, there's a fair amount of traffic at Fifth and Franklin, no question about that. But Franklin to the east does become a county road, and, you know, if you follow it all the way up the hill. And, you know, they also assert in their petition that a fair number of larger heavyweight trucks proceed off of Fifth onto Franklin to make access to that road. Now, if that's the case, you know, if there's cars parked there, do we have any trouble with turning movements?
Like I said, the, it is marked with no parking here to corner, so those turning movements are aided by that, not having cars parked up by the corners.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other residents from the 500 block of Fifth, if you'd like to offer some comment? Come on up and state your name and address, and we'll also call on Alder Killian.
Cliff Gidlin, 504 Franklin. I actually initiated this petition. There hasn't been anybody parking there recently, but there was a person who, unknown to me, but I don't know who he was. But he was parking in front of my house between my driveway and the no parking to corner sign for several months, every, every weekday, from early in the morning until seven o'clock at night. And our driveway comes out there, as we come out, there was a car right there. One of the problems, I think, is that the no parking to corner sign at our house is about 20 yards from the corner. On the opposite side of the street coming in the other direction, it's about 60 yards from the corner. So it's not uniform there. I guess if, if, if we can't make it two-hour parking, I'd like to at least move that no parking to corner back, so it's not, so my driveway isn't between it and the no parking sign.
Okay.
And there is a lot of traffic when we're coming out, if we're backing out of our driveway, and there's another car there, and there's trucks coming around, and trucks coming from either direction, it comes, it's be a little bit hazardous.
So your house, is your house the first house, then, where the here-to-corner ends?
Yes.
Were you five, did you say 523?
504.
Oh, 504, okay. Okay. Alan, what are your thoughts on extending that, and maybe put another, you know, put a extension on that here-to-corner, if that's a problem with his driveway?
I mean, that would, that would make sense. I think it would have to come back as a separate
Yeah.
item next month if, if this is. Okay, so we left it, so our city attorney says we can loosen up.
Yeah, it is, it is pretty generic, it's pretty generically worded, so we could probably get it under this item if, Jim, go ahead.
I like that solution to this problem, because the original request would not necessarily get rid of the problem. It would just have a car there for two hours instead of all day.
Right.
So the problem's still there. So if we could do this, it would alleviate the residents' concern, make the road a little safer for everyone, but still allow other residents to have guests and parking and stuff in their area, so.
Okay.
Can I move to?
You, you could.
Adjust that?
Yeah, but if you want to move to just extend the no parking here-to-corner.
It's a parking restriction.
Yep.
I would make that motion.
To extend the park, no parking here-to-corner?
To whatever's reasonable for that location.
Just extend it east far enough that it
Correct.
would get past Mr. Gidlin's driveway?
To leave you to any safety concern.
Lou, go ahead.
I would not support that, because I look at the signatures here on this petition. You know, there's, there's probably the whole neighborhood here, and, and I realize that, that this is not my district, but I am a representative of the people here. And if the people that signed this petition are dead serious about this, and they think this is a problem, I'm, I'm not going to support moving the sign back. I'm going to support this as its road.
Maybe Tom.
Tom, do you want to come up and offer some comment quick, and then we'll call the gentleman from the back as well?
Thank you. Tom Killian, 133 East Thomas Street, and the older person for District Three. You know, thank you for bringing up that potential alternative. I, I think in this case, you know, sometimes we get into some contentious issues, but in this case, this is, I think, a fairly straightforward request, pretty modest and reasonable. And as, as Alder Larson had, had pointed out, there is quite a few signatures here, and I appreciate the, the staff's observations, but I do have a list of citizens here who feel this is a problem. And I, I think that if it's a problem for the citizens, it should be a, a problem for us, and that in a case like this, I think the benefit would, would outweigh any speculation. Because right now, I think the concern, as I've heard it from doing this, from staff, it's essentially theoretical, that maybe this will happen or maybe that will happen in terms of patchwork, but that seems like speculation, whereas what's in front of us is that our residents are telling us that, that that's a benefit for them. So if, if possible, I'd ask the committee to, to please entertain heeding the, the residents' request, and if that is not possible, then perhaps an alternative like, like Alder Wadinski had, had mentioned. Thank you very much.
I will call the gentleman from the back if he wants to come up and make comment as well. I guess the question I would have, because Mr. Gidlin did circulate the petition, and all of these neighbors are supporting that initiative, but I guess I need to know how large of a problem this really is on the street. Are the neighbors supporting the petition because they're aware that this problem exists in front of Mr. Gidlin's home, or has all of the residents along that corridor experienced the exact same behavior? Go ahead, sir. State your name and address.
Kurt Schubring, 516 Franklin, so I am three parcels down from the corner.
Okay.
And I believe that, and we have a couple others here that may disagree with me, but we're doing it in support of Cliff and Gene, because it is a problem for them to back out. And I think if we do go with the no parking from corner and push that back closer to, like, toward our property, I think that would alleviate the problem.
Okay.
I know that we have trucks, when they were doing the LMPQs and taking out all that concrete, every 10 minutes, a truck is coming around at speed, because they want to hit that stop-and-go light.
Sure.
So unless Cliff has got, I think he's going to come back and comment again, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, and sometimes what we always like to try to do, too, is solve the problem with the least invasive option first, and so assuming that the committee would want to try something like this to accommodate Mr. Gidlin's driveway, if we would find over time that that has not solved the problem, there's nothing to say that we can't come back and impose a restriction, a different restriction. I mean, this wouldn't, it's certainly not impossible to change this if an interim measure didn't work. Jim, go ahead.
And the reason I made this motion is not to go against the residents, but the initiator of the petition came up with a great suggestion that would actually do a better job alleviating his concern, and it appears that the residents are just trying to help him take care of his concern.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're, my motion is the, probably the best solution at this time. If we see it, another problem in the future, we could probably reconsider it.
Certainly. Alder Ryan, you had your hand up? Go ahead.
Yes, I was just going to mention that, can you hear me?
Yeah.
That for, on, on my neighborhood on the west side, because of East Bay, there's a number of blocks that are affected with people parking on the street. So it seems that this is probably small in comparison, but maybe this going to the corner and, and moving it back may solve the problem at, at this point, instead of being a totally all houses on the neighborhood being, being bothered.
Okay, sure, and we can certainly try it, and, you know, we can get some feedback and see if the situation improves with this measure. Now, Jim's motion was to extend the no parking here-to-corner to the, to the east, to make sure that that parking restriction accommodates Mr. Gidlin's driveway at 504. Any additional comment or questions?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Tom.
I just think that, you know, moving the don't parking, you know, further away from the corner is a, a great solution. And I think for future discussion on this committee, we should look at other, without waiting for petitions, other situations in cities where heavily traveled, more heavily traveled streets, intersections, you know, where there could be large vehicles regularly, or school buses turning, that we do, as policy, move parking away from the intersection. I've seen too many places where when cars are parked at both sides of the street near the corner, people can't see to turn easily. School buses might have a trouble making that move, that turn, and that sort of thing. We just, I think we need to free up the ends of our streets more than we have right now. Right now, it's, it's just too, too close, I think, especially in some of these busier neighborhoods.
We can certainly have that discussion going forward as well, and, and Tara, go ahead.
Just to clarify, can we, how far do we want that restriction? Is it to the driveway?
I think just past, because he's the corner lot, and the driveway's on the east end of his lot. So.
Just east of his driveway, I think, Tara.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Okay. Any additional comments or questions? If not, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Wadinski?
Somebody.
Oh, we have one more comment? Come on up.
Do we have a second?
Okay. Hold on, we'll take a second first for the motion, for Jim's motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second for the motion?
Neal, second.
Second by Neal? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, David Burke, 520 Franklin Street. My name's on that petition, and I certainly don't have a problem with tossing yet and revising the petition to go along with what's been proposed. Certainly seems like a reasonable idea. If that works for Cliff, it's going to work for me.
Sure. And if you find as a neighborhood that that does not solve the problem, please let us know. Contact Alder Killian, and we can revisit something different if we have to, but this seems like a good, good try. So, all right, with a motion and a second on the floor, we'll go ahead and then vote on this item. Ryan?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Larson?
No.
Wadinski?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. That item will pass 4-1. Thank you, everyone, for coming in and offering those comments. Let's see here. That brings us to number six, discussion and possible action regarding establishing parking restrictions on Myron Street from Cleveland Avenue to McCleary Street, and on Amter Street from Myron Street to Thomas Street. And Alan's got this item, if you want to start us off?
Yeah, I can start you off, and I know Eric has quite a bit of background on this too, from talking with Rick. So this, this did come, it was brought, brought by Rick Molinecki, the DPW supervisor. As you can, as you know, on the end of Myron Street, the DPW shop is down there.
Mm-hmm.
As you can, as you know, on the end of Myron Street, the DPW shop is down there, and just to get a little bit of the circulation pattern, when trucks are coming from the east side of, the east side of Wasa are coming across the Thomas Street Bridge, their travel path would be down, they would go down Emter and then to Myron and into the shop. Same way if they leave to go to the east side. I think their preference is to go down Myron to Emter to get to the east side of town. Coming from the west, if they're coming down Thomas Street, they would, you know, take Cleveland to Myron, or the same thing if they're going west, leaving the shop, they go Myron to Cleveland to get to Thomas Street. So I think Rick's observation over the years is that if people are parked on both sides of the road, it makes it difficult, extremely difficult, for trucks, especially during the winter with plows, to get through. His solution, or his request, is that on Myron Street, basically from Cleveland Avenue to McCleary, that there would be no parking on the south side of the road, south side of the street. Then it's also his request would be no parking on the west side of Emter Street from Thomas to Myron. You also see on there that there is some stop signs. He has requested that those stop signs be switched around. I guess that's going to depend on what, you know, kind of what this committee decides here with this parking, and also in the spring, we'll put out some traffic counters and see. You know, I think we have a pretty good idea where the traffic patterns are there, but I, you know, I think it's going to, I don't want to rush to turn those around either without some traffic counts, and we can't put those tubes out now in the winter because of plowing and such.
Sure.
So I don't know, I did receive calls on this that were not, since we sent out, Lori sent out notices to everyone on Emter and Myron that are impacted by this along the route. So I did receive a couple, there was a couple emails.
Yep, we have two emails, yep.
Yep. And I did also get calls that they wanted read. I can give, Mark Westberg is at 1212 Emter.
Okay.
He's at the intersection of Adrian and Emter, and he was not in favor of doing that on Emter, and he wanted, stated that he wants all the trucks to stay on Myron and take Myron to Cleveland regardless of their route. And then Kristy Hinkins is the owner of 1314 at the intersection of Emter and Myron. I don't believe she's a landlord, but she was also not in favor of any of the restrictions on the parking. I take that back. She requests that, she understood the need for the, during the winter months, so she was in support of only doing it during the winter months. She said if it was year-round, this committee decided it would be year-round, that she couldn't understand why it would only, I explained to her that it was, why it needed to be on the weekends, because obviously a plow truck can get called out on a weekend just as good as it can on a weekday, so that's why we needed it seven days a week. She didn't, she requested that during the summer months, that it would only be Monday through Friday, so then on weekends, people could park on both sides, so she said, because plow trucks don't go out during the summer. So that was her request.
Well, and that's, I guess that was a question I was going to ask also, because in some other areas where we've had trouble with getting through with plow trucks or getting the street cleaned properly or whatever, we, to accommodate residents who need to park in the streets sometimes, we have made the parking restriction only from November 1st to April 1st during snow season, and, you know, like the neighbor said, during the summer, it's just not that much of a problem, and, you know, let them park where they need to park when there's not snow storage and snow removal in progress. You know, I guess, what are your thoughts? DPW seems to be having this problem with plow equipment.
I think Eric has probably a better understanding with talking with Rick.
That, and, you know, also, I think that Eric also had a conversation with Older Killian about maybe finding a primary route for those vehicles to follow, or at least a recommended route for those vehicles to follow, and, you know, obviously, if they, if there's mitigating circumstances, that would be different, but go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, I think, you know, just over the last few years, you know, we've talked about this quite a bit, and now that there's a restriction right in, right out only over on McCleary Street, these primary routes for Emter and Cleveland are really where the equipment comes in and out, and I'd hate to restrict them strictly all the way to Cleveland solely, just because, as Alan said, you know, coming from the east or going to the east, you know, Emter is just a better route, and it's not just our trucks, our salt trucks, but it's the heavy equipment in general. You know, they can make those turns along Emter a lot better than the other streets, and so just getting up to Thomas to go east or west. The one thing that I had talked with Tom Killian about was that, you know, we will talk to the crew members and the operators and tell them the preferred route is out to Cleveland, and so, you know, to try to minimize Emter as much as possible, but just try to restrict it and not have any of that traffic on Emter. I'm just not sure is practical, so I think with the crews and with the operators, we'll just continue to encourage them to use Cleveland whenever possible and, you know, try to minimize that traffic on Emter, so.
I think that's, feels like something we can work with, because often the task of this committee really isn't, I see the management of where city vehicles travel and how they travel as being an administrative function, not a committee function. It's also not a policy banker function. You know, it's up to those departments to manage their people and their equipment, you know, in such a way that they are effective, but that they're also good neighbors. So, you know, that said, if, I could see limiting the parking restriction, restriction to winter only. That has worked in a lot of other areas where we've had access troubles, and they've had trouble getting through even to clean the streets, but, you know, if this was less of an issue in the summer, you know, inconveniencing those neighbors 12 months of the year is a little much. Yes, what do you guys think, committee? Luke, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is it my understanding that, you know, trucks coming from the, traveling east on Thomas, do they still use McCleary Street as often as they can so they're not going through the neighborhood? And as they're, and are they exiting through McCleary Street as they're going to the east side of town?
No, typically, they are using Emter, just because the, you know, McCleary, where they exit the site, the yard site, and then they head north, there's that jog at Edwards, and it's not real.
Because I, I was following a city truck one day over to Thomas Street Bridge, and it did a quick left turn on McCleary Street, you know, even though it shouldn't because of that median's there, but it missed the median and went down McCleary Street just the same.
Alder Ryan, go ahead.
I was just going to say that when you look at Emter, that that's where the Dairy Queen is on the west side, and then you have the adult daycare for the Mung Sanctuary is on the east side. So I am concerned that you're dealing with, even during the summer, a lot of foot traffic or cars going to the Dairy Queen there, and that if you could, I would say try to use Cleveland as much as you can, but that, I guess it's something that maybe we need to be looking at more in the neighborhood about the width and talking with the neighbors about it and seeing if there's excess parking. I know, like, going to the compost with my car on Chalice, there seems to be a lot of people that are parked on Chalice during the summer as well, and so I don't know if there's adequate parking in that area, or if you've gotten enough information, Tom, to know what you would recommend.
Alder Killian, if you want to come up and offer some feedback?
Thank you, thank you, committee, and I think as what just happened with the last issue in my district, I mean, it showed that there are sometimes creative alternatives that if it works with the residents, it works. And I mean, in this case, you know, the feedback I got and that you can see in the packets, some of the written feedback, a lot of it was less concerned about the parking and the stop signs. In fact, I didn't get any, the input I received directly, I didn't get any direct input with concerns about the stop signs, and really, from the residents who lived on Emter, and I see one on Myron, the main concern was the concentration of heavy truck traffic. I think as we just talked about, with the change made with the median, when Thomas Street was reconstructed, it took, probably took some of that traffic that was on McCleary historically, and that went on to Emter. So they're already seeing heavier truck traffic there, and, you know, whether it's committee policy or administrative, we do have three north-south streets in that vicinity that kind of go to the DPW facility. There's Cleveland, Emter, and McCleary. I mean, McCleary's still useful if cars or trucks are going eastward, and so, I mean, in theory, there may be some sort of approach which doesn't inconvenience workers and DPW, but if it would be alternated or scheduled, I know that may seem confusing at first, but really, if there was a Monday-through-Wednesday schedule using Cleveland Avenue and perhaps a Thursday-through-Sunday using Emter on north-south, right there, you kind of cut the heavy traffic down on each residential street by 50%. So I don't know if that's something that could be entertained tonight or in the immediate future, but if that could be perhaps looked at by Public Works in this committee, I think by varying the paths both north-south and east-west, I think it doesn't concentrate that traffic and problem down to just to residential streets.
Sure, and they could certainly make a directive like that from a management standpoint without our direction, so, you know, I mean, that's something that DPW within itself can manage without committee authority. So if you weren't getting a ton of feedback, though, about the stop signs or the parking, and it does make life easier to get those trucks through in the winter, would you be opposed to a parking restriction from November to April on these streets?
I think, if I could.
Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I understand that, like, in the winter with the Sanders, the Salters, you know, the tandem trucks and everything, but, you know, in the summer as well, I guess if we were just going to go, I would like to see Myron Street as restricted parking year-round, just because we do have front-end loaders, we have graders, we have large equipment that runs year-round for other maintenance if, and then if we are running that big equipment, then they can run out Myron and then up Cleveland, you know, and then not necessarily on Emter, at least during the summer months and stuff, you know, if, but I definitely think on Myron, I'd like to see year-round, preferably on Emter too, but if there's a lot of, you know, pushback on that, you know, I think that, I think the operators and we'd be able to address that.
Okay.
Okay, and, yeah, I mean, and again, at your convenience or leisure in the future, if they, if those could be varied a little bit, you know, like Mr. Hyanga on Myron, he was kind of concerned about the concentration of truck traffic, so I guess anything you can do to maybe diffuse it out a little bit would be appreciated.
Mix it up a bit.
Yeah.
Luke, go ahead.
I have a question for Alder Killian. Would you, I, if I remember correctly, there's two gates to get to enter, to get in and out of the Public Works Department. Why can't we designate Cleveland Avenue as a main right-of-way, because for one, I think that's a wider street than Emter is, for one, and, you know, if, and I don't know what the names of the streets are right off the top of my head that go to the DPW, but we could designate one as an enter and one as an exit, you know, so would you have a problem with that? You know where I'm going, right?
Yes, I mean, something like that seems promising. I know the residents, and they might have brought it up to Mr. Wazalowski and Lindman when they talked, but Cleveland Avenue was often kind of suggested as a better alternative, mainly too, because one half of that street on the west side is commercial and used to be industrial, so it's not as residential there.
Sure. Is that something that might work, have in on one and out on the other? I mean, if, is that something they could manage internally, maybe, or?
I mean, like I said, you know, I'm, you know, we're happy to talk with the crews and try to tell them to focus on Myron out to Cleveland, you know? I think that there will be times when there's trucks coming in and out and equipment that will come down Emter. I'd hate at this point just to restrict that.
Right.
Totally.
Right.
So if we could leave it open, but we will more or less encourage and try to support the operators going to Cleveland.
Yeah, I'm not saying restrict them, but like you say, encourage them to, you know, it's bad enough that the, you know, that the DPW is located where it is, where it needs to go through neighborhoods to get in and out of there.
Yep.
Now that McCleary Street is no longer an option for them, and I think, as Older Killian said, Cleveland Street is being wider, and it's not inhabited on the west side of the street, so.
Yep.
It just makes more sense. Thank you.
Well, and they haven't had the option as a department yet, or at least the knowledge to try to self-correct on this whole thing, so as a department within their own management, if they try to mix it up and, you know, maybe emphasize Cleveland and Myron and, you know, less on Emter, if that, that may solve it without us doing any more. Jim, go ahead.
I really don't think we should leave Emter out, especially in the summer when the Dairy Queen's busy, because in my past career, we've gone through there quite often with our regular-sized vehicles, and had a hard time getting through there with the traffic that's parked willy-nilly on both sides trying to get ice cream.
Okay.
So that's a little traffic hazard there also.
So you think year-round on both?
I would, I would probably do as written, you know, I mean, we're not controlling any movement of vehicles, we're controlling the parking.
Sure. Okay.
And trying to make it safer for everything that's out there.
True, true, and the neighbors, if the neighbors were not overly concerned about the parking and the signs, and more concerned with the traffic, maybe we can manage the traffic different.
Administration could work on the rest.
Right. Luke, go ahead.
You know, I think I would like to make a motion to table this for now until more options are available to us, you know, by looking at the Cleveland things, Cleveland Street thing, and what to designate and what to not, so I would make a motion to table this for now.
Well, if we want to, if the request is that DPW emphasize Myron and Cleveland instead of Emter, that's a management decision that Eric can make regardless of anything we do here. We don't even have to take that up. He can direct Rick to direct his crew to travel whatever, and we don't have to manage that part, we just have to manage the parking. So is the street wide enough with the cars being allowed to park there or not? That's all we have to do here, is, you know, are you interested in seasonal or year-round and one street or both? It's really, and separate from all of this, Eric can work with Rick right away on that Cleveland Avenue situation.
Correct.
That's, that solution can happen without us doing any intervention. Does somebody want to make a motion on the parking restrictions? Alan can figure out the stop signs. I mean, we've delegated that authority to him after this all gets fixed, but the no parking situation, does someone want to make a motion on that? Oh, do you have public comment? Come on up and state your name and address for the record.
We're Sue and Tom Doring. We own the Dairy Queen on 145 East Thomas Street.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess, go ahead.
I would start by commenting, Mr. Wadinsky, parking on both sides is not willy-nilly because right now, you can't even park on the west side of the street. It's illegal to park on the west side of the street right now from the Dairy Queen, 75% all the way down the road, because you've got a whole complete driveway, an alley, and the next driveway, and just a little bit to the south there. On the other side of the road, you can park, and as you discussed in this last scenario, maybe a sign from the corner back might be a better alternative, because we're trying to make a living, and we need parking.
We have a postage stamp parking lot.
Right.
And I also understand what Eric's saying, because the shortest line to get somewhere is Emter.
Right.
You know, you're, it makes sense, but also, in the wintertime, we're closed, so there should never be an issue with turning a corner from, with a piece of equipment from Emter to Thomas.
Correct.
And in the summertime, theoretically, if you put that sign back, there wouldn't be there, because there's no parking on the west side.
Okay.
We just want to make sure that we can maintain a business and not scare customers off, because they can't.
Because they can't park.
So if we would do Emter, it wouldn't really affect your business, because they'd probably be put on the side where you can't park anyway.
Well, that's if you make that choice, and it's.
Well, that'd be the only logical way to do it, put it, you want to put no parking on one side of the street, you want to leave parking on the side where you can get the most vehicles.
On the east side, correct.
Right.
Well, it's dangerous, too, that's why I'm sure they have no parking on the west side. You can't see around the corner of that building, and so.
So that one's moot, okay.
Okay. So. Okay. So, so that's what you're wanting to do anyway, is to restrict parking on the west side of Emter?
Well, there is no parking.
There isn't. There isn't any today.
If you had to choose, it would be the west side.
Yeah.
Right. But further south, there is, is the question, I guess. We still need to manage Edwards to Myron, right? I mean, we're dealing with, the Dairy Queen block is separate. If there is no parking, because they do have that driveway in the alley and whatever, we still have to manage the parking situation from Edwards Street to Myron, correct?
Yes. Because we, we would prefer to have that parking restriction on, parking on the east side only, make it no parking on the west side of Emter.
Does that give Emter Street the most parking stalls?
Yeah. I mean, when you take a, take a look at that first block, like Tom was saying, you know, basically, you really don't have parking on the west side for that first block, just because of the, the large drive approaches and stuff that are there. Yeah.
Well, and when you get down between Adrian and Myron, there are more houses on the east side than the west. It looks like there's only two. So leaving them on the east side, or, you know, that seems to make more sense. Okay. Thank you. So then, do we have, do we have somebody that wants to make a motion, then, to restrict parking on the west side of Emter Street? And then Myron Street as recommended? Yes?
So you're only looking at two blocks, is that correct, then?
Well, from, from Thomas to Edwards is kind of a moot point on the west side, they said, because you can't park there now anyway.
Yeah. So you're really only looking at two blocks.
Kind of, yeah.
I don't think that's necessarily the case. What, what he was saying was from the alley halfway up between Edwards and Thomas, you can't park on the west side. But I believe there's still parking from the alley to Edwards. Correct?
There is parking from that, but it's an alley, the guy's driveway.
Well, so there's, logistically, there's not much room left.
One or two stops.
You'd probably be all the way to the corner almost by the time.
Yeah. So I guess I would say you would need the restriction the entire way.
Right. Well, and it really, there's no impact from Thomas to Edwards, really, because that already is, for all practical purposes, restricted anyway.
There's about two stalls, according to Tom.
Sure. Sure. Okay. So with that understanding, then, from the city engineer, do we have, does anyone want to make a motion, then, to restrict parking on the west side of Emter, and then follow the staff recommendation on Myron year-round? We have a motion by Wadenski. Is there a second? Do we have a second? Is that a second, Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. We, your volume is quite low tonight. So we have a...
It is?
It is. Except I think it's, I think it's in our end. No, you think? Okay. Okay. So that said, we've got a motion and a second, then. We'll, any further discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Larson.
Now, is this for year-round or just for winter?
Year-round. Were we in agreement on year-round, committee? Yep. People are nodding. Okay. We'll go ahead and vote on this item. Wadenski?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
His volume is better now. Larson?
No.
Ryan? Oh, we don't have her audio. Deb's video is frozen. I'll vote aye, and then we'll circle back to Deb. Oh, unmute Deb. Deb, you're muted.
No.
Okay. And Ryan votes no. That item, then, will pass three to two. Thank you, everyone. Let's see here. Item number seven is discussion on possible action regarding establishing parking restrictions in the 1,000 block of South 12th Avenue. You'll recall that a meeting or so ago, we were discussing something else when this came to, came to light. Just, just north of Thomas Street, where the new duplexes were built in Alder Larson's district, there is a jog in the road that happens right in front of those homes, and people are...
This is the wrong street. You're talking about 15th Street, probably.
Okay. Yep. So, but 12th is the same, same problem, right? I mean, we've got 12...
There's no, there's no jog. It's a straight shot.
Oh, there's no jog. But yes, so same problem, though.
Madam Chair, look at page 35, and you'll see that it's, it's a straight street.
Yep. Here. Oh, yeah, we've got photos. Okay. So, yeah, so 15th, the next item has the jog. But so this, this way, thank you for correcting that. The parking situation that we have, though, with the new homes, is creating a congestion near the, near the intersection there. And so we've asked staff to consider parking restrictions there. And we've got a email from Lieutenant Buckner, who looked at this and has actually proposed that we restrict that parking on 12th, 135 feet from the corner, I believe. Was that correct, Cor?
That's correct. But that's for the west side of that stretch?
Of the, right. So a little longer than what we were originally thinking. The packet originally said 85 feet, but we'd actually go back a little further. Yep. Go ahead, Luke.
I believe the reason why we would go back further on this is because I got a call from a constituent, I believe Cor did, too. They said if you're, if you're gonna just restrict the parking, you're, you're leaving my house as an island. And if you go, it's, if you look back past this picture, you, that's where the school bus is parked. There's, the street is, is caved in a little bit. So we're asking for the entire street, so there's no, the entire west side, so there's no, no island there. So that lady can, is blocked, her driveway is blocked. And as you can see on the picture on, on item on page 35, that, you can see that far car there, the driveways come right around, right up pretty much to the corner. And where that car is parked, you cannot legally park where that car is parked, that little SUV.
Yep.
It's not legal, because it violates the four-foot rule. And, and you're also having a problem here, like this white pickup shows, is, well, I think on the further picture, you see the pickup is, a lot of the vehicles are also in violation of the four-foot rule on the other side. So this resident really, he, he came to me and says, you know, I can't see to get out of my driveway. I think people are come, that, as you can see on the next page, the car is legally, better view of the car legally, illegally being parked. And with, he says, people coming around the corner off of Thomas Street there, it's, it's just not safe backing out of the driveway.
Well, and if they're parked tight in there, like they are in that one photo, I can't imagine that that hasn't created trouble with picking up trash and recycling. I mean, there's no way that those trucks are going to be able to get in there.
Yes.
You know, and same thing with snowplow coming around the corner and trying to clean that. So this restriction really makes sense. We would just adjust that 85 feet to 135 that we got from Cor's memo. And the rest of it, I think, was recommended to be approved as written.
I think also on page 37 here, you get a, you get a more realistic view of it. Not only do you see this SUV, once again, violating the four-foot rule, but you'll also look on, on the west side of the street, there, where that area is where the school bus is, is parked. So that's what we're asking for.
Sure.
Back there, because otherwise, that lady would just have an island there. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else have questions on this item? Or do we have a motion to accept these parking restrictions as recommended by staff, recognizing 135 feet down the, on the west side?
Neil would move.
We have a motion from Neil. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Larson. Further discussion or questions? Oh, go ahead, Deb.
I'm good.
Okay. Well, okay. So we're ready to vote on, on this item. Ryan?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well, and that item will pass unanimously. Item number eight is discussion on possible action regarding establishing parking restrictions in the 1,000 block of South 15th Avenue. This is the one I was talking about before, where we have kind of a weird little jog, and the cars are really creating some bottleneck there. And you've got some pictures of this in your packet as well. This one would restrict the parking on the west side, 118 feet, and on the, on the east side, 92 feet. Does anyone have questions on this particular item? But this does kind of solve the same problem. Alan?
I did receive a call from Mark Feldcamp, address of 1,006 South 15th Avenue, and lives on 15th Avenue, not right there, but further up, drives 15th Avenue every day. He said he's in favor of the restrictions, and he's in favor of even pushing it further, so.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to approve these parking restrictions as recommended? Sure, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I, I'm going to support this as well, but I also would like to, and I don't know how this can transpire, but if you, if you look on page 41 of your, of your packet, you can see that the city owns this little plot of land here right across from the newly constructed building. And, and I'm just wondering if somehow that can be negotiated. That could probably park three, maybe four cars off the street. You know, if, if some way you could work a deal with the, with the, whoever owns that building there to maybe give them that piece of land, if he would agree to pay it or something for, for extra parking for his building, that, that would not only alleviate the problem of us having to maintain it, but it would also alleviate the problem, relieve some of the parking off the street.
Is that that parcel, it's just, just west of 1406?
It's, it's a little parcel that's, that's right on the corner there of Thomas, just as you can see on, it's, it's just south of that driveway there.
With this one here?
That little thing. Yeah, Alan's got some in.
Go ahead, Alan. I left some food there.
That was, that was vacated several months ago.
It was?
Yes. So that's no longer owned by the city. That is owned by the 1406.
Okay. So is that for their private parking, then?
It's whatever they want to do with it, because the city vacated that little piece of right-of-way there.
Okay. Okay. So we wouldn't have any rights to let people park in there, but, yeah, I think the parking restriction through this little curve here is going to be helpful. Do we have a motion to restrict the parking as recommended by staff? Motion by Larson. Is there a second? Second by Wadenski. Additional discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Larson?
Aye.
Ryan? Oh, is Deb muted? Unmute.
Aye.
There she goes. Neal?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well, and that item passes unanimously also. Item number nine is discussion on possible action on preliminary design alternatives for street infrastructure in the North Riverfront area near the former Great Lakes Cheese property. And our city planner, Brad Lentz, has this item. We have Brad on WebEx tonight. Brad, do you want to walk us through this a little bit?
Sure. Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Okay.
We can.
Thanks. Thanks. Well, in the packet, I guess, are three options. And two of these options were just previously at the ED committee a few weeks back. You know, option one is really what we started with, you know, working with proposals that we had received for the old Great Lakes Cheese property. And we're trying to make a street work that would kind of make everyone happy out there with their proposals. So we're going down that path for a while, and, you know, when we put some preliminary engineering into it, measuring the street width, the railroad right-of-way, the trail buffer, you know, we came up with that option one. And I guess as staff, we looked at that, and there was some concerns about what kind of parcels we were creating out there, particularly on the east side of that new street. Parcels are kind of oddly shaped, they're very narrow, and, you know, with development on the, the west side of the street on the river, the parcels on the east side of the street, you know, they're not really riverfront properties anymore because of the development that's, you know, essentially blocking into the river. This concern about, you know, the desirability of those, the, again, the develop-ability, that's a word, develop-ability, of those parcels, because of their size and shape and so forth. So, you know, we did look at a second option, which is in the packet, which basically moved the street to the river. And, you know, this, this was, you know, looking at, again, this, the narrowness of the site over all the constraints that we have out there, not owning all of the property that's there, that, you know, trying to weave our way, our way around some of the constraints there with the railroad tracks. I guess this was favored by planning staff, again, because of the specific nature of the site, but just overall, because of, you know, best practices from our urban design perspective, or an urban planning perspective. You know, our own, our own urban design standards suggest that this is the way the street should be developed, that there's development just on one side of the street. So you're, you know, the development faces the street and the river. All of the area becomes riverfront property, not just a couple of parcels on the river, but that whole area is essentially riverfront property. Again, in this case, it creates larger square development parcels, and it just seems like overall a much better way to go. There was some discussion at ED about a third option that we drafted up, and that's in the packet as well. And basically, the difference there is down by Wassa Avenue, there's perpendicular streets versus the curved street that ends up with Wassa Avenue. So I actually think that would work pretty well, especially considering that, you know, if there is any, in the future, there's a, of private development there now, that if that does become, you know, influx or changes, you know, that could present better options for us in the future about expanding infrastructure onto that site. So I guess that's basically...
The, the Economic Development Committee, Brad, was there preference option three?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Alder Neal.
Yeah, I think option three, if memory serves, was kind of like, you know, I was suggesting, like, as a better land use proposal, to get rid of some of the, well, just to maximize the size of available lots. And even though I, you know, originally, you know, when all of this discussion started, was hoping to see a road along the railroad rather than along the river. And I still am not against that here. This number three option was the one that I felt it helped mitigate traffic by having a real right-hand or left-hand turn, or at least a ninety-return. And this made the land use potential more attractive.
And I, I remembered this a little bit from, right, I remembered this a little bit from the ED discussion, in that we were looking to maximize the size and shape of the parcels to make them as saleable as possible.
Yeah.
And so I, I thought we came away with option three as their recommendation.
I think, yeah, I think if I can interject, I mean, at the ED committee, it was just on for a discussion item. There wasn't any formal action taken.
Right.
We didn't have number three drafted up at that time, because it was kind of an option that came up in discussion. So this is the first time that people are seeing it.
Yeah, I think, I think, Brad, I asked, I asked if this would be drawn up for future consideration.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Alder Ryan, go ahead.
I was just looking at the different plans, and I guess what does the red line mean?
That's the road. That's the direction of the road.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just like a, a center line in the, in the right-of-way. The street actually isn't drawn on there yet. It's just the right-of-way. So that, the right-of-way would include sidewalks and parking and, and the street. We haven't gotten to that point yet.
So Brad, are you, are you saying, then, the railroad would be abandoned, so that would be a right-of-way as well, or a road?
Uh, no. Railroad is, is not going anywhere, so we have to work around that. We have to stay out of that right-of-way off the railroad tracks.
Okay.
Right-of-way is actually very wide in that area. It's about 100 feet wide, so it's much wider than just the tracks themselves. There's actually a lot of land on either side that we have to stay out of.
Well, I was just going to make the comment, back in the late 90s, my husband and I bought a farm in town of Texas where we had to have permission to go across the railroad. And it was very difficult, and I, I don't think the railroad wants a lot of crossings, and they may dictate exactly where you can have a, a, a cross. So I guess I had thought road along the river might be, if you're not going to be able to have access along the railroad tracks. And then is the railroad going to want to have a major upgrade going e, going east at, at a certain point where it would be the most traffic? point where it would be the most traffic? So.
Well.
Yeah.
But is this something we want to kick back to economic development and get more input from them?
No, we have to.
Since we did not see option three?
We have to approve these roads. ED is just, they just got it as a discussion item to try to make some kind of recommendation to maximize the saleable value or saleable amount of land, so that we try to reduce these odd duck parcels that really essentially become wasted space if this road sits in the middle. But we here have to manage what kind of street we're going to put in. They don't get that task. That falls all on us.
Okay.
Jim, go ahead.
Pardon the pun, but I think we're missing the boat here along the river. Why would we want to keep or build road along the river when we can have it behind residents away from the river, next to the railroad tracks, and put prime parcels on the river with a public walkway? Maybe get some high-value properties there that are going to look at that waterway and say, I want to build on the river. I have my infrastructure and roads in the back, I have nice sitting area and walkway in the front, I can see the birds and hear the fish swimming up the river. I want to spend money here, and I want to live on this river. We need to get this high-value property, make it very lucrative for the constituents tax-wise, and get something in there that's going to really bring in the tax base and be a great place to live for someone that can afford it. Because that property is going to pay for other infrastructure and services in the So I don't like any, all three of these, I don't like any of them. The road's too close to the river. Thank you.
This, I guess, it's hard to see this really in two D, but this road, if this, let's just say you pick option two or option three, that road would meander off the water's edge like it does in front of the water plant. Is that right? Is that kind of the same aesthetic that we'd expect? Because you'd have the trail in between too?
Yeah, I mean, the idea is to have the road, there'd be a ten-foot buffer between the trail and the street. So the street would be close to the river. And I guess, you know, I don't, I think we all agree that the river is valuable. And, you know, the point with my, I guess, presentation at ED was that, you know, having a river road is an asset. I think it's a public amenity. Putting a road there doesn't necessarily, you know, prevent riverfront development. When we look at other cities, there are streets along the river, and all of that area is considered riverfront development. Now, it's not a private lake house where you have your own private dock and so forth, but it is a public amenity to have a scenic drive, to have development along that drive that's still riverfront property, is still valuable. But it's not, when you bicycle the land, you are creating higher value on the river, but then you're creating much lower value off the river and next to the railroad tracks. So I think we have to look at this overall. And again, by putting the street there, we're not, it's still riverfront land, it's urban riverfront land. Again, it's not privatized lakefront docks with the cottage next to it. So it's a little different animal, but it's still riverfront. It's, I guess I would argue, it's more valuable to the public in general to have better access, to have a scenic drive, and to have that riverfront development there. So.
Okay. I guess if there was an alternative, I mean, just knowing what transpired in ED and then hearing that narrative, does it feel like, are you asking us to limit the options to option two or three and rule out option one? Because option one was really designed when there was three project owners proposing projects to segment off, you know, and two of those projects have fallen by the wayside and aren't coming anyway, the gastro pub and that restaurant. So would we rule out number one entirely?
I would. Yes, I would say so.
Okay.
I would say so.
I guess just to move us along. So then, we're left with two and three. Jim, go ahead.
Would it be possible to get another drawing with the properties on the river and the road by the railroad tracks? And then give me, then get us an idea of the size difference in those properties? And would it be possible to have a value difference in those properties? Is there a value difference, whether you put the road on one side or the other? Does it make it more lucrative or more valuable to have just a pedestrian bicycle way with no road in front? Or would it be the same either way? I guess that would be my question, which would be best for this community?
I would think it would be more valuable as being on the riverfront and then the parking to the west of the track. I think also getting the history of the train schedule is helpful, because the train may be going three times a day or whatever, but I would think people would want to be on that riverfront. And it would be comparable to what people have single-family homes up in Riverview, it's on the river, even though it could be condos or multiple housing.
Right. We're looking for a little higher-density stuff down here in this area anyway. So you're talking about if you were going to have a third alternative, where you'd push the saleable property all the way to the right-of-way, all the way to the water edge, and then put the entire street behind?
Yes. And then give me some values on if that's really a prudent way to go, if it's going to really increase values that much that it's the right way to go? Or would it be just kind of moot and just all the same as the other ones?
Does that kind of then start to look like the area that we're looking at, kind of down in the Riverlife area, where Second Street is, you know, where the street is behind it all?
Exactly. I mean, you still have the pedestrian way, you know, handicaps can go there, bicycles, it's a great thoroughfare for that type, and you don't have to worry about the cars racing by on the street.
We're not Second Street, First Street, sorry. Brad, go ahead. Let's take Brad first and then Tom.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, that was a, well, I guess backing up, we hired a consultant to work on the preliminary designs, and we came up with a lot of different things on, you know, a sketchpad and trying to figure this out. Again, there are constraints with the property on the north and the south end. The one on the north, we have to, you know, be against the river, because we don't own that property. So then, you know, we do have to make kind of a curving motion, which isn't the most efficient use of land. And again, from a, you know, urban design perspective, if you put the road against the railroad tracks, you know, that road then isn't really a riverfront drive anymore, it's just kind of a back alley. You're going to be facing the backs of the developments, and the railroad tracks on the other side, it's, you lose that public access. And again, a scenic drive, it's not going to be any kind of scenic drive there anymore. You know, trying to put an actual value to that, I think, is going to be difficult, it's not impossible. You know, I don't know how you compare what the value would be with a trail versus a street. Again, we're just kind of going off of sort of best practices and what other communities are doing. And again, they're trying to maximize the public access, the scenic drives along their riverfronts. They're not trying to push the street as far away from the river as they can, they're trying to, you know, bring that public access there. So there's a value there. I don't know what that value is, I don't know if it's even quantifiable, but I think it's, I think it is a value. And if we give that riverfront up to private development, you know, we are sacrificing some value. And again, I don't know what the dollar amount is, but I think it's just, again, intuitive that the riverfront land is valuable.
One concern that we had in economic development was ensuring that the riverfront access part doesn't become anyone's front lawn. And that it feels, the area along there, because we have purchased that with such a heavy community investment by the community, we wanted to make sure that everybody can access that area all the time without feeling like there's somewhere where they don't belong. And, you know, I guess I have a question, that if we were to take and push the road all the way to the back, I'm trying to visualize what this would look like. I think that puts us in a situation where we then have to ask all the developers that are developing down there to essentially design their buildings with two fronts, which ramps up their costs, because you don't want them to be not aesthetically pleasing on the street side, and then only aesthetically pleasing on the water side. So that really puts them kind of in a conundrum also, where their design costs are probably going to be elevated. Is that right? Because I think we looked at that on some other riverfront pieces, where we wanted two fronts. I think wow even. Tom, Neil.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, like, going way back, you know, when we first were discussing this, you know, I felt with my ED hat on, that having the road along railroad tracks was best, because that would up the value of the property by bringing it closer to the river. And that still is probably the case. But I also, I feel that, you know, we as a city, you know, have, as part of our strategy, to optimize, you know, walkability, bikability, access to our riverfront, so that we can use it as a public amenity to the highest degree we can and still have development. You know, I think about, let's say, the proposed housing, I think it was up to the north, or wherever it was in this strip of land. If my house were, you know, adjacent to essentially that, just the pathway, and, you know, I parked from behind, you know, near the railroad track, that would be great and wonderful. I also would feel, I would be very, very happy to have my house facing the river with a nice scenic drive in front of my house, with the nice streetlights, and then a walkway, and then the river. I still feel very much that I was on a riverfront, and I don't think I would lose that much, you know? And I think that just adds, this thing we're trying to accomplish along the river, that is a sense of community, rather than, you know, sort of just taking it over privately. So I tend to just go for option number three, as the most workable of the riverside street option. And I've stepped away really from my preference for the road along railroad track, which I just hope it has that element of public amenity a little more.
The idea with option three, I think, when we were talking in ED, is when we first saw the map with option two, when you were right along the water, when the road was taking that curve versus a ninety-degree turn, we were concerned about that odd-looking parcel that looks like a Hershey kiss.
Right.
And the develop-ability of that parcel. And so taking that out and creating that, a real corner there, not only is, you know, traffic calming to some degree, but then also creates a square parcel on that half-acre that, as you go around the corner there, and which seemed to maximize the amount of space that we could offer up then to the private sector to redevelop. I think it sounded like you were heading toward a motion for option three, Alder Neal. Was that the case or no?
I think that's my motion.
Okay. And we have a motion from Alder Neal to accept option three. Is there a second for Alder Neal's motion?
Could I, I will second that, but can I also say?
Sure. Second by Larson. Go ahead, Lou.
I thank you, Jim, for bringing up those, you know, it's good discussion that brings up all the options. And while I can see where it would benefit the homeowner and stuff, I think, you know, there's some very valid points brought up by, you know, having two storefronts and two fronts on a home. And I also would not want to limit accessibility for the citizens of this city, you know, for the select few that just want to live there. And therefore, I'm going to support option three, and I second that motion.
Sounds good. I kind of feel like that myself. Committee members, any further discussion? Go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, I, from a design standpoint, I have concerns about option three. I mean, I don't know, as staff, how we're going to make those turns work, to be honest with you. If you imagine coming up with your car and you meet a ninety-degree turn, how are the trucks going to get around that? And if you look at the, you know, just the amount of road you're building, to, I just don't know how that's going to function. How do you make a ninety-degree left turn? I don't know how you're going to get trucks around there. I'm not quite sure how that's going to function.
So option two then, with that little odd triangle, was that for maneuverability?
Right. You know, it kind of came up, and you got to think of, and I'm not saying the parcels, you know, your obvious pinch point there is that dive point building. I mean, if you could somehow just, you know, if that's there, it's there. I just, I hate to lead you down a path to think we could provide you a road there with those ninety, I've just never seen that.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Alder Neal.
Well, just two points. I mean, obviously, you know, the whole city is full of ninety-degree intersections, so unless this is a particularly skinny road, you know, I don't know that that is really that much of a concern. But if there is some sort of logistical problem there making that turn, then I would just suggest a little bit of chopping off, a little bit of the southwest corner of the 2.67 acre lot, and have not a severe ninety-degree turn, you know, but a slightly more moderate one. Certainly not that serpentine thing, but just a more rectangular, but we could just take, just shave a little bit off of that one lot, and there you go. And perhaps on the south side, we'd have options for a bit more of a green buffer.
So.
I guess we could go into some preliminary design and see what the options are and see what the turning radiuses look like. And then, obviously, on the north end there with that, the parcel on the north end, it's going to, you know, you can see there's that Great Lakes Cheese when they had in there, they had like an eighteen-foot driveway in there to access along, it runs parallel, there's guardrail between that trail and there. So we're going to have to look at purchasing right-of-way from that parcel to make this work.
Okay.
Just so that this committee's aware of that. We can't squeeze that road. We can't squeeze really anything in there to make that work. So there's going to be costs there, you know, but it's the same thing if you went with Alder Person, Wadinski's, you know, if you'd have kept it up along the top, you would have to acquire a strip through there to make that work too. We need to.
Sure.
We need to get that road out there somewhere, but that's just, I think, a constraint, because you can see where the proposed meets, we're probably going to have to get thirty or forty feet from him.
I wasn't sure if that road even went through all the way, because it was just a driveway.
It was just a driveway, yes.
I thought, why would we put a road in where dead ends?
No. We would have to extend that road up to meet.
If they sell it.
Well, if they sell it, correct. If they're a willing seller, I guess we'd have to go through the whole process, domain process.
Are we kind of jumping the gun? I mean, do we have a really proper development on the table that needs these roads? Or should we wait for something that's large and impressive?
I don't think we have anything, I mean, we have some interest in the properties, but what we're trying to do is kind of, and Brad, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is really trying to nail down the develop-able parcels, you know? Because if the interested parties, if it doesn't come to fruition, and we want to move to another RFP, or we want to gain additional interest for these other pieces, we'd like to have them, you know, better laid out.
Do we have to have the individual parcels laid? Or can we just say this whole property is available and road, and you have to understand, roads will have to be put in at some point? What is your?
We started an RFP that way in 2019, I think, and kind of leaving it wide open. And that then invited three proposals, one of whom came in with a huge request for roads to be built specifically around this facility. That plan is essentially dropped by the wayside, that was a gastro pub. But, you know, I think that it's easier for us, from a public purpose standpoint, to figure out what parts of it we have to retain for our use, and then figure out what parts of it we can offer up to others. Because I think if, we kind of got the cart before the horse, where we had the private sector trying to design the roads before we even had the lay of the land the way we needed to have it with that first RFP. And so that, I guess, was problematic, at least from an ED standpoint, it felt like. And so I think for us to figure out what we need to do from an infrastructure standpoint, and then let the ED committee decide if they want to issue a new RFP, knowing what parcels are available, or, you know, at least the shell of what the subdivision would look like. I mean, you could certainly realign that if a proposal came along that needed more or less. or less of it or all of it, you know. But I think if we had the infrastructure nailed down, people would know what they were dealing with. And then on their end, they could plan too for what they might design.
Well, I would hope that this property gets some good feedback. It gets some good, I want, I want the value. I want the value to be there. I want, this should be a multimillion-dollar area. This is great property in this city, close to amenities. This needs to be big.
Yep. I agree. And I don't think it needs to develop overnight. I think that riverfront land is a limited commodity for us. And I think now with the improvements that we've already made down there, it's become a highly attractive commodity.
Yes.
That should sell for real money.
And we have to do it right because this could be there for a long time.
Totally agree. Would we, I mean, it seemed like we were leaning toward option three, trying to figure out the corners. Would it be possible for us to direct staff to at least get a preliminary design of this together and figure out if that corner could be altered in that lower right corner of that 2.67 acres to accommodate decent turning movements? And if you see that there's pinch points and the logistics aren't going to work, we certainly can, you know, bring us a cross section and we can maybe adjust. Would that work?
Would we also need that center road crossing the railroad tracks there? Could we get rid of that and have more land for development?
The piece right in the middle?
Yes. I mean, the more, the more grade crossings we alleviate, the safer it is.
Right. I, I guess, you know, we added that in because, you know, we're not going to get any additional crossings. And so that's really, unless we buy that property and extend all the way out, you know, that's really our only other crossing. So depending on how this develops, maybe that road only gets built up to that point. I don't know, you know, depending on how.
We could end up with a cul-de-sac at the end if we don't have a willing seller on the other end.
Right. Or, and then in the future, I don't know if something comes in from, you know, I mean, to your point, we don't know how this will develop, but yeah, so.
Would that work, Alan? Can you design it to, you know, a small percentage and see where we'd be at with this option three? Okay.
Yeah, I think we put some 2D lines or something.
Do you need us to officially vote on it? Or do you want us to just agree by consensus? Because you'd end up bringing it back anyway.
I think no action probably is good. Just have new information come back.
Okay.
We can bring it back.
Okay. Are you good with that, committee? Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, one thing on option three that just kind of stands out to me, I don't really see it on option two, is right there to the right of the 0.51 acre parcel.
Uh huh.
The road, the road is. On the other side of the street, there's that kind of jog out, the yellow line jogs out, making a triangle like away from the railroad tracks. And I don't know why that's there. And that certainly creates a pinch point. And why is that there?
Is that the railroad right of way? That does have a little 45-degree angle there.
Yeah, but I don't see it, I don't see that. Oh, I didn't see it in option two as well.
You know what that is, Alan?
I'm not sure. I noticed that too. I would imagine that's probably a vision triangle or something for the right, for the railroad. We'll have to, we'll have to double check on that. Because you're right, that does create an issue, but we'll.
If we alleviate a crossing, they might want to give that to us.
We'll double check on what that is.
They give us nothing, ever.
That's a finger.
Right? So.
And I guess I can look at how much land we would need to acquire on that north end too when we're looking at this, if we put a section through. A lot's going to, you know, I guess, a lot's going to depend on what we, what we look at the roadway section to be.
Sure.
You know, what width we need if you're looking at sidewalk, parking. I mean, we'll lay some options out.
Okay. Well, let's, then we can agree by consensus on that to direct staff to just bring those renderings to us. And we would take official action once we know a little more.
Do we have to talk about parking on that road?
Oh, Alder Ryan has a hand up also. Do we need to address parking right now? Or probably more with the design once he's got it pulled together, right, Alan?
I was going to bring up that same area that Tom Neil was talking about, that southwest corner of the option three.
Yeah.
Is that something that community development, has they approached the owners of that property? It just seems like with, within Tiff funding, they could be bought out at a fair price. The cost of moving and setting up their, their new place wherever they go and utilities are.
Are you talking about, are you talking about Dive Point? Is that where you're looking at?
Yeah.
Number three, to the west of the 51, 0.51 acres, that building, is that a dye company or something?
No, it's Dive Point Scuba. They.
Okay. So what is the property with the white roof there to the, to the west of the 0.51 acres?
Yeah, that's the, that's the Dive Point property. Is that your reference? Yes.
It's Dive Point Scuba. It's an established business. So we'd have substantial cost to relocate that.
Has anybody approached them at all from community development?
I don't know that they would be motivated to move. They have river access and they're a river-oriented business. They rent kayaks and that sort of thing. And there's a kayak slip.
Oh, okay. Okay. I got you.
And that might be an amenity to the people that move there.
They're probably adding something to the area being there. So, okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we won't need to vote on this one until we know a little more. So we can defer action on it. And I think Alan knows kind of what we want to see for drawings. And then we'll revisit it once he has that ready. So that completes number nine. And that takes us to item number 10, which is discussion and possible action regarding 2021 street reconstruction projects. TJ's got this one.
Yep. We wanted to bring our proposal to the committee just to make sure we have consensus and remain the committee's expectations.
Okay.
So at the top, we have the municipal code, which states the minimum road width for residential streets are 32 feet and 36 feet as a maximum. And that's at the face of the curb. And then going down to the sidewalk, it just basically states that the Board of Public Works has the authority to put in sidewalk where it's needed. But we'd like to get recommendation from the committee to move forward with where we're adding and not adding sidewalk. I'll pause in between each street for questions. But first up is Third Avenue from Randolph to Boss Creek. Existing, it's 40 feet wide outside of the municipal code. So we're going to narrow that down to the maximum width, which is 36 feet. This is a bus route and it receives, you know, heavy traffic. So that's our recommendation. And then moving on to the sidewalk, there's a map that we provided. So, let's see, on the east side of Third, it has sidewalk on both ends, on both sides, except for at the very north near Boss Creek, which we are recommending to extend on both sides of that intersection. And then on the west side, it stops mid-block between Lucille and Clayton. We are recommending that we extend that all the way up to Boss Creek. And then for, you know, potential future project that could connect all the way up to West Campus.
So install the green pieces right now with the road?
Correct.
We have been trying to finish that sidewalk grid in neighborhoods where the sidewalk stops at weird, at weird points like mid-block. So this certainly would make sense.
Okay.
And then you'd assess, while we're putting it on one side, you assess the property owners on just that side or both sides?
Just that one side.
Right. Because the other side already has theirs, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding Third? Move on to Fifth?
Yep.
Okay. The roadway varies through here between 30 and 32 feet. We're proposing to make that continuous 32 feet, matching the existing in the minimum. This is a bus route, but we haven't had any complaints. There is existing sidewalk on both sides and we're not proposing to add anything other than what is, need to be removed and replaced. Any questions on Fifth? Moving on, Rosecrans. This section of road has no curb, so it's very narrow between 20 and 26 feet. We are recommending to widen it to the minimum width, which is 32 feet. This is a bus route, however, it's making its way through now, so it shouldn't be an issue. There are no sidewalks in this area. There's also no sidewalks on any of the connecting streets except for at 17th. So we're not proposing to add any sidewalk here. We'd have very limited right-of-way to add that sidewalk.
Are you adding curb and gutter?
Yes, there will be curb and gutter on both sides.
Okay. That's my district. And I know, it's, it's kind of a, as much as a sidewalk would really be needed on this street, there just isn't, there just isn't the room for it. So I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. And then moving down McIntosh, right now it is 33 feet. We are recommending that we widen it to 36 feet, which is the maximum, reason being this is a truck route. And as soon as you cross the railroad tracks near St. Paul, it does widen out to 36 feet. And then when you, the bus route, not the bus route, but the truck route makes that turn onto Bellis, it actually widens up to 40 feet. The one caveat there is we are going to be removing quite a few trees because we are widening it. We will still have a wide boulevard of around five and a half feet on both sides. So we can replant the trees. That won't be an issue. And then also with the sidewalk, there is sidewalk on both sides and we're not recommending to do any more than we need to.
I'm trying to envision this. Is this from the old Marmett building, you know, where Charter Communications is down there? Is that that part of McIntosh Street West from there?
Yes.
Because wasn't that what we just requested some funding for and stuff?
Correct. This is funded by CDBG.
Okay. But it's, so it's going to be constructed next year regardless?
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you know if most of those trees are ash or what species?
Um, I brought the list with me. I know there's a 50-inch maple, silver maple right on the corner. There are three ash trees. Three of the eight are ash.
Which need to go anyway.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right.
I make a motion, we accept this proposal.
Okay. I have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Wadinsky? We'll go ahead. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Ryan? Oh, she's muted. Hold on.
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Wadinsky? I'll vote aye as well. And those items are approved. Item number 11 is follow-up on WPS street lighting and LED lighting.
Okay. So at the end of the last meeting, we had talked a little bit about possibly spending some extra funds to convert to LED. And then it came, the conversation came up about WPS's lights and the possibility of speaking with WPS. So I did reach out to Dave Schneider, who is our, our rep with WPS regarding the streetlights. So there is, like, like I had said last time, WPS owns the wooden poles. Wherever you see a light with a wooden pole at a lot of the isolated intersections or mid-block, those are owned by WPS. And they own and maintain those. Now, the city pays a monthly flat fee. So WPS's policy is when the HPS lights, high-pressure sodium, when they burn out, they replace them with LEDs. So when somebody calls and says my light's burnt out, they'll go out there and replace them with LEDs. I asked Dave about the possibility of converting them all. And he said that the WPS does not have the staff or the money to convert them all, to change them all out, and that the city would not see a savings, that it's a flat rate, whether they're LED or whether they're HPS. So not really any good news that there's, there doesn't look to be a cost savings to that. I mean, we're looking to ask WPS. First of all, they wouldn't do it. And second of all, we wouldn't see a cost savings, so.
Could we tie something like that to our street construction projects? Say that we're out doing a project in a particular area. Could we look at conversions of WPS lights at that point with the construction? I mean, not asking them to do it citywide, but, you know, if we have HPS lights where we're building in a corridor, could we then get them to do some type of a conversion?
I think that we could swing. And I can ask Dave about that.
Because you could get whole blocks at a time that way.
A lot of times those lights move anyway. When we do reconstruction, they have to move the pole anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Because they're either in, in the way of the curb or they're in the radius of the curb a lot of times. So that's something, that's something we can look at.
Sure. And just ask them if they'd be willing to do them that way, a couple blocks at a clip. At least then when, you know, people get their new street or get their new pavement, they also get new light. Go ahead, Jim, and then Deb.
Would those still be WPS lights? Or would those be city lights then?
They would still be WPS lights if they're at intersections and such, unless this committee, you know, we, that's a, that's a good point to bring up, that we're not proposing any decorative or any, many more lights on any of our projects for the summer, Third, Fifth, or Rosecrans. So any requests for lights there at intersections or mid-block would be WPS lights, the bigger ones. And those, if we did have requests for new lights, they would go on LED.
Well, and maybe that's something we could start this year with this new construction season, is with these streets that we've approved, check with them and see if in these blocks where we're rebuilding, would they be willing to swap those out right away?
Yeah. And I'm not sure. We'd have to look at if there even are streetlights on Rosecrans at the intersections. And maybe we could request they be added.
I believe they're metal poles, but I could be wrong.
Okay. We can look at that as part of our project, what, if we can add at intersections or if they can be swapped out.
Perfect. At least then we'd make an impact and improve the lighting a little bit, a little, little faster than waiting for stuff to burn out. Because when you're trying to get rid of them, it seems like those last forever. So, anyone else have questions about that lighting conversion? Oh, Deb Ryan, sorry. Go ahead, Deb.
I was just going to ask Alan and Tara, when is that contract with WPS expiring? So we could maybe bring it up and before it expires about how to change it in the future.
I don't think it's a contract, is it?
Yeah, I don't think it's a contract. I think it's just, I don't know. I'd have to, I don't remember ever a contract coming to this committee. I think it's just a flat rate they charge us per light. I'm not sure.
I think it should be a contract. Don't you think so, Tara?
It's probably something that they did 100 and some years ago.
I'm not really aware off the top of my head whether we have a contract or not. I mean, we can look.
I would say, could we investigate it? I mean, I would think something like that should still be under a contract. And at some point, it may expire and then we could renegotiate.
Well, or WPS is WPS and they just say, here's how much it costs. And do you want it yes or no? So we'll look into it though, Deb, and let you know.
All right. Thank you, Tara.
All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Item 12 is future agenda items. We know that we have a couple. And we'll certainly have that, that road coming back along the river. Anything else anyone can think of immediately that they want to have on?
Engineering, I'll have a few more things. We're going to have some irregular driveways or some, code allows me to approve driveways up to 44 feet. And there are going to be some in excess of that. So we're going to have to bring those to CISM next month for consideration.
All right. And if anyone thinks of anything in between, just let me know. Oh, Deb, go ahead.
I got a call from a neighbor that lives on Sunset Drive about the, the, the new Best Western and that. And I do see that Lockery is taking down the south end of the, of the Plaza Rooms. And I guess, is it, is it too early to talk about what they're planning on for entrance and exit? I was under the impression they were going to be using 17th Avenue near where the Best Western is and that there is an entrance exit on Elm between 17th and 14th, but that it's, it's within three to four car lengths of the stoplight. And I do think, once you put in 120 apartments, we're going to have traffic issues. So I don't know if there's a way we could start discussing some of that with Lockery or look at 14th Avenue as maybe another exit.
I think usually what will happen is they'll come to us with a proposal for what the curb cuts and. curb cuts and stuff that they're going to do and then we will discuss that with them. We haven't seen anything at this point, so.
Okay.
Okay.
And I would imagine that if we were to look at a whole lot of traffic in and out on 14th, that we'll receive probably an immediate reaction from the residents on the east side of 14th. They were not really excited when that, those businesses developed up around there over the hill and when that original proposal called Crabtree Ridge was proposed there to have driveways in the backside, they wanted those all gated for employee use only and very limited. So if there's too much traffic in and out on 14th, that might cause some consternation with those folks up there too.
Well, I don't think we've seen all the traffic issues that will be on Elm, even with the New Mountain Lane's apartments at this point, but.
Right.
It just seems where the entrance and exit is, it just looks like there's, we're going to have backups at the stoplight.
Okay. That's certainly something to keep an eye on. The only thing I would offer up also, the items that we passed tonight, five, six, seven and eight, those parking issues, I would like us to put those on the very next council meeting for the 26th so that we can get those done and get those signs up before we have too much more winter. I don't want to wade in too far.
Madam Chair, can I have, I have a question. Would those, would those be on, on the agenda as, as a consent item agendas or would they be separate items?
I think normally the clerk's office and the mayor's office decide what goes on consent. I think if there's stuff that passed unanimously and it's not contentious, that's kind of how they decide, but we don't have to request that, but.
I noticed as I was on 15th Avenue today, there's already a temporary no parking sign on at S-Curve.
Sure. So, yeah, I mean, that's, we should go to the next council meeting rather. Normally our items go to the first meeting of February, but those few, if we could, the minutes from this committee always come out super fast, so thank you, Lori, for that. But, yeah, if we could shoot those to council for the end of January and get them done, that way we can get signs in because we're looking at some significant snowfall in the next few days and we want to not wait till the end of February to get this handled, so.
I agree.
Okay. So we'll do that and then anything else? If it comes up between meetings, you guys, let me know. Motion to adjourn from Neil. Do we have a second? Oh, Tom, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. I'm sorry if I'm not allowing this. I just wanted to make sure that we have the 900 block of Scott Street on the next agenda for one side of the street parking. This is up by Stewart Park.
Yes, that, that is on our February for sure.
Okay.
We verified that, we verified that yesterday, so we'll have that on for you.
All right.
We'll take a motion to adjourn from Wadinsky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Neil. Members in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Everyone's in favor.